All amenable orders, this is a common council meeting of Tuesday, April 19th, 2016. Roll call.
Alderman Kurkowski.
Here.
Alderman Bukiewicz is excused, Alderman Verhaelen.
Here.
Tillman.
Here.
Gale.
Here.
Guzekowski.
Here.
Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
As it says on the board, if you'd like to speak at one of the items tonight, please fill out a comment request form, bring it up here, and then we'll call your name when that item comes up. All right, approval of minutes of April 4th, 2016.
Kurkowski make a motion to approve the minutes of April 4th, 2016. Is it Kurkowski's second?
Roll call.
Alderman Verhaelen.
Aye.
Tillman.
Aye.
Gale.
Aye.
Guzekowski.
Aye.
Kurkowski.
Aye.
Item four is the election of common council president. We do this every year after the April elections. City Attorney will read the, tell us the instructions.
I can give you some guidance. Good evening, council. This is the first regular organizational meeting post-election every April. So I can tell you that as one of the pieces as indicated on our agenda, under the statutes, it's section 62.09 sub 8 sub E, "The council at its first meeting subsequent to the regular election and qualification of new members shall, after organization, choose from its members a president, who in the absence of the mayor shall preside at meetings of the council, and during the absence or inability of the mayor shall have the power and duties of the mayor." So, as part of what we do to elect the council president, first, we would take any nominations from any aldermen, however many nominations that might be. Once all of the nominations are in, there would be a motion to close the nominations. That motion would require a second, and then there would be a vote. At that point, the nominations would be closed, and there would be a vote on paper. This is a vote by paper ballot for council president. So, that's the synopsis. I'll turn it back to you, Mayor.
Thank you. So at this time, open it up for nominations for common council president.
I'm going to make a motion to nominate Alderman Ken Gale.
Okay.
Verhaelen makes a motion to recommend Dan Bukiewicz.
Verhaelen nominates Stan Bukiewicz. Any other nominations? At this point, I'll close the nomination process. We need a second. Do we need a motion to, motion to close?
Guzekowski, a motion to close?
Second.
Kurkowski's second.
Roll call.
Alderman, Tillman.
Aye.
Gale.
Aye.
Guzekowski.
Aye.
Kurkowski.
Aye.
Verhaelen.
Aye. Can you hand it out ballots? Okay, write your... It's all collected. The city clerk will read the votes.
Alderman Bukiewicz. Alderman Bukiewicz. Alderman Gale. Alderman Gale. Alderman Gale.
All right, votes 3-2. Congratulations, Ken. I look forward to working with you as common council president for another year. All right, moving on to the public hearing. Item five, it's a rezoned public hearing. It's a request by the city of Oak Creek to rezone the properties at, do I have to kind of just say as listed? I can read them all. I can read them all. Rezoning the properties at 7170 9161 and 11065 South Howell Avenue, 100 East Rossin Avenue, 6220 and 62, no, 620 and 625 East Drexel Avenue, 915920 925 East Forest Hill Avenue, 1225 and 1235 East Pute's Road, 571 1101, 1201, 1203, 1830, 1835 East Ryan Road, 9135 and 9501 South Nicholson Road, 9170 South Shepherd Avenue, 9681 and 9849 South 15th Avenue, 9860, 9908, 9950, 9960, 9980, 10040, 10145, and 10170 South Pennsylvania Avenue, 3221 East Fitzsimmons Road, 2231, 2300, 2515, 2801, and 29 East Oakwood Road, 715 West Oakwood Road, and 2815 East Elm Road, excluding C1 Shoreland Wetland Conservancy, Floodway, and Flood Fringe Districts to P1 Park Districts. City Clerk will read the public hearing notice.
Public hearing number one is to consider a request by the city of Oak Creek to rezone the properties at 7170 9161 and 11065 South Howell Avenue, 100 East Rossin Avenue, 620 and 625 East Drexel Avenue, 915920 and 925 East Forest Hill Avenue, 1225 and 1235 East Pute's Road, 571 1101, 1201, 1203, 1830 and 1835 East Ryan Road, 9135 and 9501 South Nicholson Road, 9170 South Shepherd Avenue, 9681 and 9849 South 15th Ave., 9860, 9908, 9950, 9960, 9980, 10040, 10145, and 10170 South Pennsylvania Avenue, 3221 East Fitzsimmons Road, 2231, 2300, 2515, 2801, and 2920 East Oakwood Road, 715 West Oakwood Road, and 2815 East Elm Road, excluding C1 Shoreland Wetland Conservancy, FW Floodway, and FF Flood Fringe Districts to P1 Park District. There follows the legal description. Date of notice is March 17th, 2016.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Doug Seymour. I am the Director of Community Development for the city of Oak Creek, and this is a public hearing on a request to rezone various and several Milwaukee County parcels from their existing zoning to the P1 Park District. I want to read those addresses again. Good job. But, the county, Milwaukee County owns several, a lot of acreage in the city of Oak Creek. And while they own it and operate it as open space in many cases, as parks in many cases, a lot of the zoning that was in place didn't reflect its use as public parks. This is actually the second round of rezonings that we took a look at for those purposes of really making the designations, the zoning designations in the city of Oak Creek reflective of the ownership and use of these properties by the county as public parks or public parkways or public open space. So essentially, you'll have some of these properties, many of which are zoned single-family residential, or some which are maybe zoned agricultural. But the purpose is, in recognition of their purchase by the county, of their ownership by the county, for public parks and open space purposes, we wanted to make sure that it had that public park zoning designation or the correct designation. And obviously, there were several properties which are red as identified in the maps that were sent out to the residents as well as the council. Those areas that you see in red are those areas which are owned by the county and in many cases were not zoned as a public park according to our zoning code. And this rezoning would change that designation so that these areas that you now see in red would then be zoned public parks. I will note that when we get to the discussion portion, I do have one comment that I'd like to share with the council. But until then, we'll recognize that this is a public hearing, and I would ask that anyone has any questions or comments regarding the proposal to rezone these various properties, these various Milwaukee County properties to P1 Park District, please fill out a comment form, hand those to the city clerk or the mayor, and when called, proceed to the podium and state your comment or question. This public hearing is now open.
I'll make three calls for public comments. Mr. Degner, were you requesting a comment on this item? Come on up. Name and address for the record. Pull the microphone down so we can hear you.
Ardern Degner, 8540 South Pennsylvania Avenue. As you probably well know, I live on Pennsylvania Avenue and just south of Pute's, there's property there. Essentially, what we're dealing with is this big streak that you show on the map south of that. The Chicago-Milwaukee and North Shore Railroad, which I've ridden many times, property in that area across the east side of, just south of Pute's, I don't think that's Floodway. Now, why should the city or the county take property that's able to be developed and turn it into a park? Now, this is the, I noticed that south of, especially around Ryan Road and Oakwood, there's a lot of Floodway. But I don't understand, since we have so little, or I should say, we have so much land that's been in marsh in the past and draining, and as you well know, this North Shore Railroad was built high above all the surrounding properties. And in fact, as you probably well understand, that that dirt has been used to fill in a lot of properties. So why should we eliminate this from our zoning and from our plant development in our city? I don't understand it.
Would you like to answer that, Doug?
Well, I'm not sure what specific parcel you're referring to, Mr. Degner, but in parts of the former North Shore right of way have been, actually, I think much of that was purchased by the county for the purposes of putting in a bike trail. And with respect to that, and if that's, if I'm not correct in representing what you're talking about, please let me know. But I mean, that would not be in and of itself be able to support any residential or other types of uses for structures, given that it's limited width. I mean, a lot of the areas that are in the southern part of the city, you're corrected, southeast of the city, are areas which were acquired, whether it be by the county or by the Metro Service District, and dedicated to the county for open space purposes. Many of those do have some environmental considerations on them. So, I mean, I don't know that there are a lot of county parcels that the county owns that aren't being used for park purposes, or don't have some open space uses, given their environmental constraints. So, I mean, if you are aware of a specific property, I'd be happy to take a look into that, but I'm not aware of that at this time.
Okay, Mr. Creighton, were you asking to speak on this one? Go ahead. Come on up. Name and address for the record.
My name's Jim Creighton, 2007 East Elm Road. I only have, the question I have is, I rent a lot of those parcels that they want to be rezoned, and I have leases on them, and I just want to make sure that that's not going to change if this is rezoned.
And if you are, if the parcels are being farmed right now, in many cases, and I know again, some of them might be zoned A1, some of them may not, I mean, a pre-existing use for agricultural is considered illegal, non-conforming use, and can continue to occur even though the zoning has changed.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Second call for public comment. Third and final call. This time, I'll close the public hearing, item number five, and move on to discussion of the actual ordinance number 2801, approving the rezoning of the properties at 7170 9161 and 11065 South Howell Avenue, 100 East Rossin Avenue, 620 and 625 East Drexel, 915, 920, 925 East Forest Hill, 1225, 1235 East Pute's Road, 571, 1101, 1201, 1203, 1830, and 1835 East Ryan Road, 9135 and 9501 South Nicholson Road, 9170 South Shepherd Avenue, 9681 and 9849 South 15th Avenue, 9860, 9908, 9950, 9960, 9980, 10040, 10145, 10170 South Pennsylvania Avenue, 3221 East Fitzsimmons Road, 2231, 2300, 2325, 152801, and 2920 East Oakwood Road, 715 West Oakwood Road, and 2815 East Elm Road, excluding C1 Shoreland Wetland Conservancy, Floodway, and Flood Fringe Districts to P1 Park District. Doug?
Thank you. The property for which I was referring to, the property at 715 West Oakwood Road, and I'm going to highlight it on the screen here, but it's the property which is just to the, between Air Products and the railroad tracks along Oakwood Road. That is actually one of the properties that is newly encumbered by any wetlands, floodplain, what have you, and actually may prove of some utility, whether now or in the future, to the adjacent property owner. And I've spoken with Parks Director John Dargal, and explained that we'd like to pull that off, the rezoning at this point in time. If at some point in the future, there's a need to go back to parks, it's not changing the ownership by the county, but just allowing for that parcel to be utilized potentially by Air Products for expansion or the adjacent property owners without having to go through the zoning change again. It's really a parcel that is not connected to any other county parcels, it's isolated, and it really doesn't fit the mold as far as the rest of the properties that we're considering for rezoning this evening. And certainly at your discretion, we'd like to pull that from the rezoning.
What was the address?
715 West Oakwood.
Is Mr. Dargal made aware of that?
Yes.
Questions or comments from the council? Seeing one, need a motion, seeing none, need a motion with that exclusion for that parcel at 715 West Oakwood Road?
I'll move to approve ordinance number 2801, approving the rezoning of properties as listed, except for the property at 715 West Oakwood Road, excluding C1 Shoreland Wetland Conservancy, FW Floodway, and FF Flood Fringe Districts to P1 Park Districts.
Guzekowski's second.
Roll call.
Alderman Gale.
Aye.
Guzekowski.
Aye.
Kurkowski.
Aye.
Verhaelen.
Aye.
Tillman.
Aye.
All right, thank you. Item seven is a public hearing on a rezone request by Jack and Joan Cole to rezone the property located at 1610 East Pute's Road from RS3 Single Family Residential to A1 Limited Agricultural in the third district. City Clerk?
Public hearing number two is to consider a request by Jack and Joan Cole to rezone the property located at 1610 East Pute's Road from Residential 3 Single Family Residential to A1 Limited Agricultural. Applicant is Jack and Joan Cole. Property owner is Jack and Joan Cole. Legal description, there follows, date of notice, March 17th, 2016.
Thank you. The request before us is for a rezoning of the property at 1610 East Pute's Road. And as you can see from the screen in front of you and before the audience this evening, a good portion of that is encumbered by whether it be Flood Fringe or Floodway. Now, as a result of a drainage project, improvement project in 2014 along the west side of the railroad tracks, this lowered the regulatory floodplain and resulted in a portion of that property being removed from the Floodway and the Flood Fringe. So, not to get into great detail, but since a Floodway is a base zoning district, when you remove that Floodway zoning district, there was nothing essentially underneath it. So, it would have been proper to rezon that, and one of the possible avenues is to rezon that to RS3, which is adjacent, compatible with the adjacent zoning and the adjacent properties. However, the property owner, the property owners, the Coles, had asked that the property, the entire property be rezoned to A1 Agricultural. And the property does meet the minimum requirements for that, and certainly, you know, the, we have A1, I believe, which is a little bit in the vicinity to the south and to the east, so it's not inconsistent with the comprehensive plan, which I believe shows us as a limited development area. So certainly, the use of the property as agricultural and the change of the zoning to agricultural would be consistent with the comprehensive plan. The Plan Commission has reviewed the proposed requested rezoning and has recommended its approval. I will now ask that anyone has any questions or comments regarding the proposed rezoning of the property at 1610 East Pute's Road from RS3 Single Family Residential to A1 Limited Agricultural, please fill out a comment form, take that to the city clerk, and when called, please come to the podium and proceed to address the council with any questions or comments that you might have. This public hearing is now open.
Make three calls for public comment. First call. Second call. Third and final call on item number seven. Seeing no one coming forward, we'll close the public hearing and move to item number eight. It's a discussion and consideration of ordinance number 2797, approving the rezoning of the property at 1610 East Pute's Road from RS3 Single Family Residential to A1 Limited Agricultural in the third district. Questions from the council? As I said, the Plan Commission, I met with the Coles six years ago, seven years ago when I was an alderman. I'm glad to see this go come forward, that they can build the building they want to build, and think it's great for you guys and great for the city. So congratulations on that. No other questions or comments, we'll take a motion on number eight.
Verhaelen makes a motion to adopt ordinance number 2797, approving the rezoning of the property at 1610 East Pute's Road from RS3 Single Family Residential to A1 Limited Agricultural.
Kurkowski's second.
Roll call.
Alderman Guzekowski.
Aye.
Kurkowski.
Aye.
Verhaelen.
Aye.
Tillman.
Aye.
Gale.
Aye.
Good luck.
Yep. All right, moving on to new business. Item nine is a consideration of a motion to authorize staff to split the Lake Vista Park Development Project into two bid packages, allowing work to begin in 2016 and be complete by September 1st, 2017, and to authorize staff to begin the process of using TIF 6 as a donor district to a new Lake Vista TIF 13. The creation of TIF 13 would be subject to all existing statutory, there it is, procedures and requirements before this could occur. This is in the fourth district. Jerry?
So this is a follow-up. The council will recall, we had bids on the Lake Vista Park project that came in overbid. The council rejected those bids. We understand that the council and community were disappointed that that wasn't moving forward, and we were trying to get that project to move forward. So staff has been working to do that. We had had one piece of information, if you recall, actually two, that was not available to the council at that point. We had a bid that was going out for the extension of Fifth Avenue. So if you remember, that was part of a big roadway expansion project that we had to serve the park. Those bids came in last Tuesday, I believe, opened by the state, and we now have those costs for that project, so it can be a little more firm in what our costs are going to be moving forward. We had originally budgeted $7 million for Lake Vista Boulevard that was constructed last year, and the Fifth Avenue extension. Based on the costs that we incurred for the roadway last year and the bids that the state received, we can say that we're going to be at about $7.8 million combined for those two projects. We had $800,000 in contingency for that, for all of the projects, and all of that contingency is going to be eaten up, if you will, on the roadway projects, but we can, we can fund those. We are expecting that work to begin at the end of May, beginning of June, and will be completed this year. So we had, I think, seven bidders. We had what we felt were favorable bids that came in. The project's going to be managed by the state as opposed to our engineering department, and it'll complete an important connection to Lake Vista Park. The issue there is it still leaves us a little short. We're not sure how much on the, on the park playground project. So we're looking to find ways that we can get additional dollars to be able to complete the full vision of that project, and we've identified a way that we can create a donor and a donie TIF to be able to get up to about $1.8 million in additional dollars that are currently available into that project so that we complete, complete that. We're reviewing the bid documents. We think we will get better prices by splitting out non-congruous projects. We have some excavating work and some building work, and we included those all in one bid, and we think if we split those out and get the right contractors bidding on those, plus change some of the contract elements, we're going to get more competitive bids. We think if we would push that this year, we would get high bids, because we're running late in the year by the time we get them out. So we've suggested that the work could begin this year and finish next year. So we'd like to be able to proceed with that project. It's going to take a couple of months for us to get the bids done. We've got some approvals from the DNR that we need, and we have to go through the process of creating a new TIF district as well as the donor TIF. So I can get into a lot more detail if you'd like, but I'll leave it for there for now.
All right, questions or comments from the council? Alderman Tillman. And then Alderman Gale.
Do we have any, I know what you said, what you might eliminate, do we have any plan as to what the first phase will consist of?
Well, we're going to try to, Alderman, do all of it at once. We're going to split it into two packages, but we're going to do the entire project. So we think we can do the entire project. But it's going to get split out between the two issues. We think by making some of the revisions that I've suggested and getting some of the additional dollars, we think we can do the full project.
That the first phase would be this year?
It would be. On both, on both bids, the work would begin this year. Correct. All right. We know you were all disappointed when you heard that it might not. We're trying to get that to happen, and we're trying to do it in a way that we can, we can fund it and make some adjustments on the property to get it in line.
Alderman Gale and Alderman Verhaelen.
Jerry, we've long kind of kicked around using the donor TIF concept here to pay the administrative costs on the lakefront of the 1.8 ballpark, what that really amounts to, and then...
So the process that actually is going to work here, we have a due diligence cost of 1.8, 1.9 million dollars that we spent over the last five or six years to basically get into ownership on the lakefront property. So those are dollars that we spent as far ago as the urban landline. So those are costs that are part of that. We had a fair amount of environmental, legal costs, environmental engineering costs over those periods of years. We have a fund balance in TIF 6, cash fund balance of over $1.8 million right now, and we're generating about half a million dollars a year that's coming into that TIF. TIF, I think expires in 2022, so we've got about two and a half million dollars or so that'll, that'll come back into that, so there's going to be dollars there. So essentially, what we do with the new TIF donor, donie TIF, is we take the fund balance in 6, and we create a new TIF district down at the lakefront, which right now is 13. People don't like the unlucky number, but the state makes, you know, number them all. And then we basically pay those due diligence costs that we have incurred over the last five or six years. Then we take that due diligence cost that we repay, Fund 40, which is our capital projects fund, which is where that came out from originally, and that's how we fund the park. It's kind of a circuitous, but that's how we do it. So it took us a while to figure that out, but we did.
From a community standpoint, especially in like the vendor summary reports, these are the lawyers and consultant fees we see on a regular and ongoing basis that have added up over time.
Correct, correct. So they would be primarily, we had partnerships with Godfrey &amp; Khan, Envira, and Ramble over the last five or six years. It's basically reimbursing those. As I said, it started with, I think, the Urban Alliance. There is a master plan that started probably in 2008, something like that. So we can reimburse ourselves for all of those due diligence costs. We've been keeping track of them. Bridgette has those. Bridgette, the city attorney, both current and present, and myself have reviewed those. We've kept those up to speed, and we've got a listing of every one of those expenses.
Great, thanks, Jerry.
Alderman Verhaelen.
Yeah, just one question. With starting these projects in the fall, wouldn't it be possibly a little bit more prudent to wait till springtime when, you know, all the things kind of line up? Because you're still running into a lot of contractors finishing up projects at the end of the year, and this might, might affect the way the bids come in as well, the way I look at it.
Yeah, and I think you're absolutely right. That's why we say that the completion date is next year. So if they have the ability to start this year, which many of them will, they can start it and then complete it when their crews are ready next year. We think that's not going to affect, affect our pricing unfavorably. We talked about that a lot internally. I think you make a good point. That's where we end up. We'll see when we would get the bids. Mike, I don't know if you want to make any comments about that.
Is there, is there a possibility that if they'd come in exponentially high because of the false start, we could, we could rebid it for spring again?
We could always reject the bids. I mean, I would, yes, we could.
Mike?
I guess I would just agree that we did have that conversation several times, and basically came down that, like Jerry said, we think that, let's get it out to bid, let's get started. get started. There's a lot of work to do out there. And, and if we're lucky enough to get a contractor or two that feel they can get a good jump on it this year, that we will still get some good bids.
I just hope that, that you guys aren't overly optimistic because of the nice winter we had this year, you know, where everyone was able to work pretty much nonstop all winter. I hope, I hope it's, that wasn't, that didn't play into your decision at all.
We, we think they'd shut down in the winter.
Yeah, yeah, I understand.
We don't think they generally work on this.
The other thing to consider too is that we are short of soil out there. So there's going to be a good effort to haul soil to the site, and, you know, maybe that works out that, that there could be trucking during the winter. You know, just depending on what the soil source is and if they can get to it.
All right. Alderman Guzikowski, then, Mr. Digner.
I was, you know, we were all disappointed when the, when we had to reject those bids, but I like the fact that this approach will allow us to, you know, create this whole park in its entirety. So being on the ad hoc committee for Lake Vista, I think this is a real sensible approach, and I appreciate the efforts.
Mr. Digner.
Harden Digner, 8540 South Pennsylvania Avenue.
Harden, pull the mic down a little bit.
And I'm also concerned about this, I think it was, what is it, item 11 that I'd mentioned, yeah, marketing services.
Let's talk about item nine. I can't talk, I can't jump ahead.
All right. They are, in my mind, they are tied together because essentially we are talking about a shortfall in lakefront funding. Yet, the tourism money that we're paying Savage out of, I think it was $330,000, can be used for any kind of tourism-related services. My suggestion is that the observatory that was at Delco, that you still have the roof for, be moved, instead of adjacent to here, be moved in the lakefront and actually install a telescope in there so you have a vista. That could allow us to use that majority of that money to finish the construction of this instead of spitting it away on, on PR stuff. So don't you think that makes sense to have an observatory on the lakefront as a vista? Well, I've been at a lot of parks where you had to pay quarter or 50 cents to get a chance to look over the lake. You're missing it if you don't.
Thanks for your comments. Other questions or comments from the council? Motion on nine.
Someone will make a motion to authorize staff to split the Lake Vista Park Development Project into two bid packages, allowing work to begin in 2016 and be complete by September 1st, 2017. Further, we recommend the council authorize staff to begin the process of using TID number 6 as a donor district to a new Lake Vista TID 13. The creation of TID 13 would be subject to all existing statutory procedures and requirements before this could occur.
Kelski, a second.
We'll call.
Alderman Kirkowski.
Aye.
Verhaelen.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Gail.
Aye.
Guzikowski.
Aye.
Moving on to number 10, it's a motion, a consideration of a motion to award a contract to Strand Associates, Inc. for professional design services of a communication equipment screening structure at the base of the 145-foot city communications tower at 255 East Centennial Drive, Fire Station 1 in the 3rd District. IT Director Caesar is here.
Basically, what this is, is if you're familiar with the existing cell tower that was at the old fire station on Pute's Road, at the base of it, when we had carriers go there, they put their individual buildings in place, and then they put a fence around them. And I'm sure you all remember those. Actually, they're still there. The fences in the buildings are still there. What we decided to do, or thought would be a better approach at the new fire station, is to create a single structure that would house any potential carriers or, or communications companies that would want to locate on the cell tower. It would be a structure that would look similar to the fire station with a brick pattern, and all the units would be together in it. It would be a, a structure that would have three partitions in it or three potential carriers. And each partition, as, as we lease space on the tower for whatever communications company would come in, they would occupy one of those structures. It would create a uniform look. It would create something that would be attractive and match the fire station, and we wouldn't have a structure on the north side of the tower, one on the east side and one on the south side. So it would take up less space and would be more attractive. So we went with Strand, and because they did the tower design, we approached them and said, can you, can you do us a, a design for a building that would be on the south side that would house potentially three carriers? The building is, the carriers are going to a little different approach now. Instead of putting in a, a building that is 10 by 20, that has walls and a roof on it, what they're doing now is they want to put in a, a structure that has a fence and that is a metal grated roof on it that's open so that they don't have to put HVAC inside their units. So for them, they don't have to power them and, you know, cool, heat them in the winter and cool them in the summertime. So the structure that we're proposing would basically be brick block walls with a concrete floor in it and a metal grade on the surface that would allow the, the heat and the coolness to go in and out. So it wouldn't have a standard roof with a 412 pitch or anything like that. It'd be more of, kind of like a, I don't want to say garbage corral, but to give you an idea of, like, the one we have outside here, it's, it has walls around it and a gate on one end that opens up, and that's how they, they get in to do their equipment.
Looking at the current, or the new tower at Fire Station 1, where would that building be?
That would be, the new, the new structure would be on the south side of the tower, which is closest to the back parking lot. And it would be basically orientated east-west, so it would be probably 20 feet long and 30 feet wide. And it would be orientated in the east-west direction, but all three units would be together as one structure. So it would look like one building.
So I think two points on that. Each of the areas would be 10 feet wide by 20, so that would be the space for each of the three potential occupants of that. And they would access the site from the south side of the fire station from existing parking lots as opposed to creating a drive. I think we had seen some proposals that there would be a drive off of Centennial. We didn't like that. We didn't think that was necessary, and so we're directing the access from the south. As part of this process, we need to go to the Plan Commission to get this site plan reviewed by them once we get the structure built. And then this would be an attachment to any of the leases that we have. If you recall, when we were talking with Verizon, there were lease attachments in terms of the structures they were going to build, kind of unseemly, not very nice. This plan would be part of that attachment in terms of how they'd access the site. We need to make sure that we're putting all of the necessary connections to the tower for all three sites so that they can get their, their cables up the, up the tower. So it's going to be ready for them to go. It's basically going to help identify exactly how the, how they'll operate. It should take quite a bit of time off of the installation on any of the folks because it'll be there, ready to go.
What's the timeline to get this thing up and ready?
July, I think August is when we would have the building up.
Correct.
Okay, questions?
Mayor, Caesar, Jerry, we're obviously going to work with Chief Rosen ditch to make sure the...
Absolutely.
That's correct.
Yeah, we're going to match the brick, we're going to match the colors. We think that's important. We heard lots of landscaping.
Just operationally, so Tom's cohesive with our plans there. And then professional services, are we, it's exactly 14,950 or up to 14,950 per cost?
It's up to 14,950.
Okay. It's not stated on the, well, at least on the yellow page, but it is in the report.
Good, Ken?
I'm good, yeah.
Chief, anything? Concerns, questions?
Anyways, I'll, I'll talk loud, is that when the, when the drawings were first made, this was already put in as part of the whole overall plan, that we have that space available. The only little difference is the access to the south parking lot, and we can work around that.
Okay. Alderman Verhaelen?
Yeah, just two questions. The actual size of the structure, first of all?
20 by 30, you said?
30 feet wide by 20 feet deep.
It's not going to be attached to the, to the fire station building?
No, no, it is not. It'll be freestanding on a concrete pad.
All right. And then the only other question I had is in regards to the roof, being that, that the, the fire station and, and tower, they're in real close proximity to a lot of trees, high trees and, and whatever. Not to enclose the structure with a roof, but if there'd be any possible way to, you know, build walls, say, eight foot high and then have like a four foot venting area that where the air would flow through and then still maintain a roof on top of it to prevent any, any debris or anything from falling out from next door and, and...
I think it's a graded roof design. I think it's a graded roof design.
Yes, it's a graded roof, so it, it will be very, very open. The reason they put a roof on it is so that kids or somebody can't climb in.
Right.
So that's really all the roof is for.
Right, so if you think of it, it's going to be three sides. It'll be the brick. The roof will be an open graded structure, as would be the south side, would be open graded structure for the heat dissipation. Each one of the units would be individually locked and accessed by the three different carriers we would have on it.
All right. Other questions? Alderman Gail?
Caesar, we're comfortable that any potential carrier is going to be comfortable with that type of design?
Well, that's why we're having Strand do the design on it. They're going to research that as well. I already have two carriers who have indicated that that would work as a design. That's kind of, that's what they're looking for. So, and, well, they're, they're two of the biggest carriers in the industry right now, so I think we're comfortable with that, yes.
That is the preferred design. You know, I was a little bit surprised at that, too. Basically, you're taking all of the equipment that's at the base of the tower, that's in an open area, but apparently it's built for that, and, and that's, that's the way they want it.
After three, four years, they decided a different technology is going to be used to renovations their dime, hopefully, in negotiations.
Depending on how we write the lease.
Anything else? Motion on 10.
Kelski will make a motion to award a contract. This, all right, we're on, I'm sorry. Kirkowski make a motion to award a contract to Strand Associates, Inc. for professional design services. Wait a minute.
You're good.
Going.
All right, I'm sorry.
Keep going.
Of a communication equipment screening structure at the base of the 140-foot city communications tower at 255 East Centennial Drive, Fire Station Number 1.
Hang on a second.
We'll call.
Alderman Verhaelen.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Gail.
Aye.
Guzikowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
All right, thank you, Caesar. Thank you, chief. Item 11 is a motion to approve a project proposal for marketing services with Savage Solutions in an amount up to $30,115 for the remainder of 2016. Doug?
Thank you. Since 2012, Savage Solutions has served as the city's branding and marketing consultant, and during that time, they've assisted the city in developing and maintaining its new brand and have coordinated the introduction and continued growth of that brand through various means, including print, web, radio, and social media. Now, as the city's brand becomes more established, our focus with Savage is transitioning away from a brand development to more of a project-based strategy. Again, we're transitioning away from our, our development focus towards a kind of an implementation focus. And as such, the budget for marketing is being realigned to focus more on specific projects. So this is a change from previous contracts where a significant portion of that budget was allocated on a retainer basis. So we're going to more towards, again, implementation, more specific projects. So for 2016, the city's looking to Savage Solutions to assist with the following projects, and it's continuing strategy design and project management for our radio advertisement campaign for both the Packers and Brewers Radio Networks. It's the development and coordination of seasonal street banner campaigns for Drexel Town Square. It's the development and placement of specific print media, including the South Suburban Chamber advertisements, design content and launch, launch of a business microsite within our website, the content of video content creation for that business microsite, and also a small overall retainer for undefined projects. And they've listed that at $5,000, roughly $5,000. Now, we took this to the CDA for their review and recommendation, and during their review, the CDA also asked that the contract be amended, or the project be included in the contract for development of print collateral material. And I think that's something certainly that is a very good, good project and something that the city does need. And as such, they have asked that the retainer portion be increased to account for the development of those materials. So the proposal from Savage is for $30,115, substantially less than what we've done in previous years. I think during our more formative years, we've done upwards of $100,000 on some of the brand development. And as we kind of, again, go into more of a implementation mode, that those costs are coming down as more of an execution strategy. So the CDA has recommended that the common council approves a project proposal for marketing services with Savage Solutions in an amount, and it should be up to $40,000 for the remainder of 2016.
That, that is an error in the top line?
I'm sorry?
That, the number in the second line of the report should be 40,000?
It, it, right. It's in, in recognition of the CDA's recommendation that we add additional project funding for print collateral.
Can you describe kind of the material that CDA discussed that, that kind of pertains to?
A lot of times you'll, you'll see, and it's not uncommon, whether it's in any professional capacity, that a company will have a, you know, an eight by 10 kind of glossy leave behind piece. You know, this is why you should consider building or bringing your business to the City of Oak Creek. I mean, we've kind of shied away from a lot of those things in the past because the use of static information is, you know, it's, it's static. And, you know, we wanted to be agile and flexible enough to respond to individual requests. But there's a certain element of that that's always going to be, you know, a basic print piece that is always going to put the best face, face of the city forward, and we can supplement that with more specialized material. So, you know, whether it's, you know, someone who's selling the, the new cars, or whether it's someone, you know, who's selling a vacation, there's always going to be a kind of a, a base promotional packet which shows off the, the city in the best light and is something that can be supplemented with more designed, some more detailed design material as we identify specific clients. But it's something that we get to leave behind piece. It's going to be a first contact piece that we can essentially just leave a good first impression with folks.
I think the thinking was that the Savage Solutions would have the capacity and the skill to...
Definitely.
...produce these as we see fit and need.
In context for this item, if I remember correctly, is the council directly asked us to be more diverse in how we approached marketing and, and promotion of the city, and this covers a lot of those areas. For example, they write the text for the Brewer commercials, and they, and when we change those, which we will do, do through the course of the season, they can respond quickly, create new, new text or new script. And then the print material piece, I think, is important because what I hear is we've been lacking that, so.
That's exactly correct.
And Doug, this budget has gone from, this was plus $100,000.
Right, I mean, initially, I think we were...
200, something?
Well, not 200, I think it was up as high as 110, 115. But it's important to note and that this entire project, and as it was in the past years, this is entirely funded through the use of hotel motel room tax. No general fund dollars are being used for this purpose.
Any other questions? Alderman Toman?
Can we change the jingle? Anybody that's heard it, I don't know what the consensus is.
It's mixed, mixed...
I've heard a lot of bad comments.
Yeah.
Just to throw that out to, who approves that anyway?
The CDA.
CDA.
And could the council see that at, at a future date?
Sure, I could play it for you.
Before we get a stamp on it?
Well, I think, one of the reasons... I think you've charged the, the CDA with that activity, and, and if you'd like to, those activities to come before the council in the future, I think that's something we could certainly do, but I think that was, you know...
To be brutally honest, the result from the council probably would be no different or any better than the CDA. Just, it's six people, and what's CDA, nine people, eight people? Just, it's six people, and what's CDA, nine people, eight people? It's opinion, it's... This was actually the best of the three that we, we considered when I was on the CDA, so. I'm not opposed to bringing it forward, but I don't know that we're going to get a better result. But certainly, we can do whatever we want with the commercials. Other questions? Alderman Guzekowski?
Savage Solutions has served the city very well, and I think this is money that's going to be well spent, especially with its, you know, defined scope here, you know, of the $40,000. And I do agree with the, the request and the need for the printed material.
Anybody else? Motion on 11.
He will move to approve the project proposal for marketing service with Savage Solutions in the amount up to $40,000 for the remainder of 2016. Kerkowski will second.
Roll call.
Alderman Tolman.
Aye.
Gale.
Aye.
Guzekowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Verhaelen.
Aye.
Item 12 is a consideration of the Personnel Committee's recommendation for a police dispatch skills-based wage system and adopt ordinance number 2802, amending section two of ordinance number 2788, fixing the salary ranges, salary, wages, and allowances for non-union, general management personnel, and other city offices and positions for the year 2016 for dispatch positions. HR Director's here, Chief Edwards is also here to answer questions.
Good evening. Before I explain some of the history, you, you should have a revised ordinance. One of the Personnel Committee members recommended revising the ordinance, as our intention was to give the dispatch manager the discretion to pay them within that range. None of the numbers changed on the revised ordinance, it's just that we condensed three different levels into one level. So this is recommended by the Personnel Committee. They approved it at their April 4 meeting, and this was in response to retention and morale in the dispatchers area. Last year, we had eight dispatchers leave, which is about a 50% turnover rate, which is extremely high. So what this does is we've created three different levels within the dispatch wage plan. There's an entry level, which is where they are specifically in training, and it usually lasts about a minimum of 18 months. Then, once they're, all of their training requirements are met, they are able to move into the advanced level at the discretion of the dispatch manager. So they do have to show the competencies listed within that level, and they do have to handle most situations on their own. The third level would be the lead level, where they are required to join at least two out of the five specialty units that are identified as units within the dispatch area. The units are the communications training officer, the training unit member, CPR instructor, mentor, and validations officer. So of those five units, the lead position would be eligible for an additional 75 cents per hour if they are in the communications training officer unit or the training unit, or an additional 50 cents per hour for the other three. However, there is a maximum, so they can, the maximum is a dollar sixty per hour at the lead level. And they would have to be on the job for at least three years to obtain that level. So the top possible pay would be the 24.85 per hour, and that is above the average of the cities listed of the comparable study that we did. So that would help with some of our recruitment and retention efforts. But the top pay would still be below the wages currently paid by Greenfield Franklin and Wauwatosha. And the total cost of implementing the system, including increases in Social Security and Wisconsin Retirement, would be $55,398. And they're looking to implement this effective June 12th, so it would be half a year. The budgeting or the fiscal impact that the chief identified is, there are currently two part-time positions that are empty, so there, so there is a surplus of over $27,000 for half of this year. And then there's also, in the 2016 police budget, an additional $78,000 captured from city growth in 2015. And then, as well as the current gas prices, there would be some additional savings there as well.
Anything else?
That's all I have.
So if I heard you correct, the budget impact is 55,000, but the actual fiscal impact is neutral because of those open positions, gas savings?
Correct. The dollars are within the budget, and it'll be kind of reorganizing those dollars. We were fortunate enough to have some pretty substantial growth in 2016. We're expecting some more of that in 17 to cover that. I think the one point that, that I'd want to reiterate that Becky made is when we had done our comparability studies and seen where our wages were compared to the comparable communities, and we used the same comparables with all of our negotiations so that we're consistent over time, our wages were falling behind, and I think that's why we had some turnover that we did. I think that was pretty clear when we went through that, that study. Becky did a nice job along with John and his staff. I think we were also very responsive to the committee that wanted to make sure that we were paying for performance, that they were clear indicators of how we move people through the various, the various wages. I think we went back two or three times, and we were challenged on that, and I think we did a nice job doing that. And I think there's discretion on the part of the dispatch manager to move individuals through here, which was a key part of the discussion with the Personnel Committee to make sure we weren't just moving people, that they clearly demonstrated the skills. And I think that's consistent with what the council has directed us to do on an overall basis, as opposed to a step in wage system, that we were truly implementing a performance-based pay system. And John and Jason, who's the dispatch manager and their staff, I think, did a very nice job of putting the, the job descriptions together and implementing that, that concept, I think, fairly well.
Chief, you're comfortable with the changes? He nods, yes. Alderman Guezakowski?
Becky, I was just confirming with Alderman Tolman, I believe in going to be our recommendation, we actually, given the way it's laid out in the ordinance, we're going to stick with the original descriptive ordinance on the page that you originally had in the packet. It's in line with what we intended versus the amended ordinance.
Okay.
Yeah, so the line that shows the ordinance shows the original 2802 with three lines broken out for comp is the way we intended to have this ordinance put into effect.
So that, that's not a substantial change, correct?
There's really no change, but it's just descriptively, so.
Got it. Any other questions? Alderman Guzekowski?
I, I want to thank the people. I, I like the approach here, the skills-based system. I think that this is well thought out. I don't know who all, you know, collaborated on this, but I think it was a great job. Hopefully, this will help stop the bleeding, you know, at the dispatch center, no pun intended, but I think this is a step in the right direction, so that's long overdue. Thank you.
All right, thanks for that comment.
From Personnel, just, Mike probably shares the same sentiment, that we really strove here to drive some discretion at the management level, to pay people who were performing based upon their skills and experience, once we were certain after 18 months that they were going to be with the organization. So we're looking for a compensation program to reward employees for being here and developing their skill set, but not just paying people for being here over time. So I, I think this is a sort of a direction that we're going to move the entire organization as, as we have opportunities to, and, and that flexibility. Some staff obviously can't be done that way, but others where we have the flexibility, we intend to compensate those folks who are performing as, as we expect and above that, and, and reward them accordingly. So I think this is one step in that process.
Okay, Alderman Tolman?
And we also, just, just to add to that, we also have assurances from the chief and Jason, the dispatch manager, that these will not be automatic promotions. There's a little bit of leap of faith there, but I trust that the department will use the discretion, because when, when you look at the, when you look at the level of advancement here between entry level and advanced, there is quite a bump involved. So we hope that, and I would like to monitor at the, at the Personnel Committee level that is being done as we move forward. Thank you.
If you'd like to speak on this issue, fill out one of these forms, drop it up here real quick. They're, they're right in the thing there. Why don't you come up, and you can fill it out afterwards and hand it to me? Name and address for the record.
9160 South Nicholson Road, Oak Creek, Wisconsin. I just have the question is...
Here, I'll pull your mic up there a little bit.
Do you do exit interviews on the people who are leaving to find out what the real reason is for the leaving?
Yes, I do.
Are the exit interviews showing that it's wages, or is there, are there other problems?
Actually, with the dispatcher position, the previous HR manager conducted those exit interviews, so I didn't personally conduct those.
So you don't know, and you can't explain it?
The chief...
Some of the people left, some of them are wages, some of them personal reasons, some of them they couldn't, they didn't, the job didn't fit them, there's different reasons. Dispatch is very unique because there's nowhere to go to train for dispatch. When you get that job, you come into it, and it's pretty much you learn as you go. There's nowhere to learn about it. So sometimes they come in and they change their mind. Some of it's the wages. We did have, I can tell you last year, I can specifically say I know personally of three that left because of wages, took different jobs because of that. The other ones, I don't know, the former HR director did some exit interviews, and I don't know all the results of that.
Well, I just think that would be a good idea to know that, so when you're asking the council to make decisions on wages, you can present them with something. The three that left because of wages, were they new hires, or were they long-term people?
Some were long-term, some were shorter term. I mean, we had, there was a variety of them, the three.
Okay, it's just for your information. Thank you.
Carol? Could I add something, as long as you're there? We actually saw that physically on paper because we were falling behind. John, I think the chief will reiterate that, you know, we, we were falling behind on wages, and that was one of the reasons people were leaving.
That wasn't exactly what I was worried about. I was worried about, was there some other problems going on, and you guys were just covering it up with wages, wage increases?
We're not interested in covering things up. If there was a problem, we would talk about it.
Yeah, I mean, but if you don't know, you know...
This, this does not put us at the high end of the wage scale or the low end. This puts us somewhere in the middle.
The middle.
So that's where we wanted to be.
Okay.
Very fair wage for a very, very tough job.
I, I believe it. It is.
Thank you, Mr. Grundy. Okay, any other questions or comments? Motion on 12.
Tolman will make a motion to, to the common council to consider the Personnel Committee's recommendation for the police dispatch skills-based wage system and adopt ordinance number 2802, amending section two of ordinance number 2788, and fixing the salary ranges, salary, wages for dispatch positions.
Oh, a second.
Roll call.
Alderman Gale.
Aye.
Guzekowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Verhaelen.
Aye.
Tolman.
Aye.
All right, next two items are, it's just a note, and I'll ask the common council president, Gale, if he wants to do what we usually do, which is to put these mayor and common council aldermanic appointments to various boards and commissions on the next common council agenda. Is that your plan?
That is the plan, chief.
Okay, so there's, I'm not going to, do I need to list them all? It's all the mayor appointments and all the common council president? Hmm? So we're holding 13 and 14, just informational. All right, which takes us to 15, which is a motion to concur with the mayor's reappointment as follows. New appointments are bolded. I'll read, I'll tell you when they're bolded, since you don't have an agenda in front of you. A is Board of Health, three-year term to expire nine, 2018. It's Denise R. Ewing Decker, 8337 South Palomino Court. Order Review is a five-year term to expire five, 2021. Carolyn Cobb, Celebrations Commission, three-year term to expire four of 2019. James S. Flato, 3250 East Wilkwood Road. Carolyn Bicabich and Jill Faes. D is the Finance Committee, it's one-year term to expire April of 2017. Zach Olson. E is Plant Commission, three-year term to expire four of 2019. That's Wally Dickman, Walter Dickman, and Chaucie Chandler. F is Police and Fire Commission, a five-year term to expire April of 2021, is James Schultz. G is Landscape and Beautification Committee, two-year term to expire April of 2018. Jeff Went, Glenn Coolis, Deb Kovilacek, Dave Kovilacek, Steve Bouche, Tim Tehan, and Sharon Tehan. H is Weed Commissioner, one-year term to expire April of 2017, and that would be for the Streets and Parks and Forestry Director. Any questions or comments? Motion.
He will move to concur with the mayor's appointments, reappointments as listed.
Guzekowski will second.
Roll call.
Alderman Guzekowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Verhaelen.
Aye.
Tolman.
Aye.
Gale. Aye.
Thank you, gentlemen. Now, item 16 is a motion, consideration of a motion to approve the 2016 vendor summary report in the amount of $764,692.48. Finance Director is here to answer any questions. Alderman Guzekowski?
Quick question, Bridget, on number five, on the Chamberlain Group. What is outstanding in terms of, for Jerry, services due and, and money due to Chamberlain?
I think this is the wrap-up of this payment. We're getting close to finishing up the punch list items, and we're going to be going into warranty items. Number of the progress payments for the furniture are, these are final payments on this list of bills for some of those. We have some that are outstanding, so I think that is it for Chamberlain.
Well, I guess just in general with state of the punch list, is it possible to hold this item in terms of payment until we know for sure everything's done, or is there...
We could. I have every reason to believe that they'll stay involved in the project as he's been. We're working with him on doing some of the EOC build-out right now, so I suspect that'll be the case. If the council wants to hold it, you can, but that'd be your discretion.
Has, has the Chamberlain Group operated in anything but good faith since the project started?
No, they, they've been really good to work with. We've obviously had some problems with contractors and some of the subs on the punch list items. I mean, just, we were supposed to start on Sunday. I think a lot of you know on the library that we didn't get the delivery again, so I think it's delayed for a week, so we've had problems with some of the subs in terms of that, and, and that's not our owner's rep, and in some ways, it's not the general contractor. We've had some difficulties with that, and, yeah, it's a little long in the tooth. Well, it's a lot long in the tooth right now.
So do you expect Steve and Carolyn to be, continue to handle those items for us?
Yes, yeah, as well as the architect. The architect has that responsibility. The owner's rep supplements that, so we, we still have the both of them engaged.
Any other questions or comments? Motion on 16.
He will move to approve the 2016 vendor summary report in the amount of $764,692.48.
Kerkowski will second.
Roll call.
Alderman Kirkowski.
Aye.
Verhaelen.
Aye.
Tolman.
Aye.
Gale.
Aye.
Guzekowski.
Under Community Development, item 17 is a consideration of resolution number 11698-041916. It approves a final plat for Oakfield Village Edition Number Two. It's in the first district.
Thank you. Oakfield Village Edition Number Two creates nine new building lots and two outlots on the properties at 324 East Forest Hill and 400 East Lily Drive. Actually, the first subdivision plat to be recorded or will be recorded in the city in many years. This is a, kind of completes or moves to completion the originally proposed Oakfield Village, which was just north and, which was developed in several phases north of this property. Again, nine new building lots. There were, previous to this, there were three lots or two created by CSM off of East Forest, East Forest Hill Avenue. This final plat will record and dedicate the connection between Alyssa Lane and Lily Drive, will provide additional stormwater management capabilities. The procedure for plating in the Cityville Creek still is that you go and put in the improvements after approval of a plating plat. Once those all improvements are complete and certified, so by the various departments, whether it be engineering, water and sewer utility, what have you, then you can come forward and record the plat, at which time you can actually sell the lots and develop those lots. So those items have been completed, and as such, the recommendation is that the council adopts resolution number 11698. Excuse me, approving the final plat for Oakfield Village Edition Number Two.
All right. Anybody have any questions? Motion.
Verhalen makes a motion to adopt resolution number one-one-six-nine-eight dash oh-four-one-nine-one-six, approving the final plat for Oakfield Village Edition number two.
Gelski, a second.
Roll call.
Alderman Verhalen.
Aye.
Tolman.
Aye.
Gale.
Aye.
Guzakowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
All right, engineering, we have ten items. Relevancy is appreciated. Item eighteen is a consideration of resolution number one-one-six-nine-zero dash oh-four-one-nine-one-six, accepting the two thousand fifteen annual report for Oak Creek's WPDES stormwater and natural resources two-sixteen permit. Mr. Simmons.
Thank you, Mayor. This is related to the city's DNR stormwater discharge permit. And it summarizes the city's activities for the year two thousand fifteen regarding stormwater runoff and in particular, water quality, sediment control. So it summarizes tonnage collected and disposed of for street sweeping, catch basin cleaning. Details the efforts on the city-owned detention pond maintenance, enforcement of erosion control on construction sites and education activities related to the program. So I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have on the report for this year.
Question. Alderman Verhalen.
It's not a question on the report itself, but I remember when we first instituted this thing for compliance for NR two-sixteen and that our street sweeping program was really an integral part of that. And I guess maybe we could go more to Ted as to how that equipment is holding up or if we're gonna be in line for upgrading or purchasing new street sweepers in the near future.
Streets Superintendent Ted Johnson with a quick synopsis of how the equipment's holding up.
You will, you will see a new street sweeper request coming within the next year or so. Those sweepers are getting kind of old. We've done quite a bit of work to keep them on the road, but they're getting up there in age.
All right, just more of an FYI so everyone knows it's coming.
Okay, motion on eighteen. Thank you, Ted.
Mayor, I have one question for Mike.
Alderman Gale.
Mike, Jerry, the fund balance looks like it's gonna be heading down to, are we gonna curtail projects or have to think about stormwater fees or?
Bridget, Mike and I looked at stormwater fees for two thousand sixteen. We thought we had adequate fund balance for that. We are gonna be recommending an increase in two thousand seventeen. I think it was a buck fifty, but it could be off, but we're gonna be looking for increased fees in two thousand seventeen.
That's what the twenty-nine is right now?
There, I think they're, yeah, twenty-nine and I think we talked about going, I think it was a buck and a half, Mike, so.
That's per household, right?
Per household, yep, and that shows up, it's collected as part of the tax bill, so.
Anything else? Motion.
Gale will move to approve resolution one-one-six-nine-zero dash zero-four-one-nine-one-six, accepting the two thousand fifteen annual report for Oak Creek's WPDES stormwater permit.
Guzakowski, a second.
Roll call.
Alderman Tolman.
Aye.
Gale.
Aye.
Guzakowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Verhalen.
Aye.
Item nineteen is a consideration of resolution number one-one-six-nine-five dash zero-four-one-nine-one-six, accepting the workmanship and authorizing final payment to Gunderson Excavating for demolition of the former city buildings at eighty-six forty South Hall Avenue, project number one-five-zero-zero-two-B in the third district, Mike.
This is basically just accepting the workmanship, closing the project, not making the final payment. The final payment is just twenty-five hundred dollars, which was just a bit of retainers that we were holding on, just to assure that the contractor would, you know, fill out the final paperwork in a timely fashion. He's done that and so we're just requesting that the project be closed out.
All the work's done?
Yes.
Okay. Any questions? Motion.
Verhalen makes a motion to adopt resolution number one-one-six-nine-five dash zero-four-one-nine-one-six, accepting a workmanship and authorizing final payment to Gunderson Excavating for demolition of the former city hall buildings at eighty-six forty South Hall Avenue, project number one-five-zero-zero-two-B.
Guzakowski, a second.
Roll call.
Alderman Gale.
Aye.
Guzakowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Verhalen.
Aye.
Tolman.
Aye.
Looks like the next five items are related to Southfield Apartments. Item twenty is a consideration of resolution number one-one-six-nine-nine dash zero-four-one-nine-one-six. It's a resolution vacating a public utility easement at Southfield Apartments, sixty-eight seventy-one and sixty-nine fifty-five, South Thirteenth Street, tax key numbers as listed in the first district, Mike.
Yes, Mayor, you're correct. The first, the next three items, items twenty through twenty-two, are, all are related to vacation of existing easements. These easements were created under a former site plan. They don't have facilities constructed within them. In fact, the buildings that are going up now, in some instances, intersect these easements, so they are of no use, they should be just wiped off the books. So that's the request for items twenty, twenty-one and twenty-two, to vacate those easements. And then items twenty-three and twenty-four are creating the easements that will, that have the sewer and the water constructed within them. So definitely a need there.
Okay, so let's take them one at a time, but if you certainly have questions related to the whole project, you can interject them when you need to. So item twenty, motion. Questions or comments before we motion?
None.
Go ahead.
Gelski will make a motion to approve resolution number one-one-six-nine-nine dash zero-four-one-nine-one-six, a resolution vacating a public utility easement at Southfield Apartments, sixty-eight seventy-one and sixty-nine five-five, South Thirteenth Street, tax key as listed.
Guzakowski, a second.
You heard Guzakowski's second, roll call.
Alderman Guzakowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Verhalen.
Aye.
Tolman.
Aye.
Gale.
Aye.
Twenty-one, any questions? Motion.
Kirkowski will make a motion to approve resolution number one-one-seven-zero-zero dash zero-four-one-nine-one-six, a resolution vacating a public drainage and utility easement at Southfield Apartments at sixty-eight seventy-one and sixty-nine five-five, South Thirteenth Street, tax key as listed.
Guzakowski, a second.
Roll call.
Alderman Kirkowski.
Aye.
Verhalen.
Aye.
Tolman.
Aye.
Gale.
Aye.
Guzakowski.
Aye.
And twenty-two, any questions? Motion.
Gelski will make a motion to approve resolution number one-one-seven-zero-one dash zero-four-one-nine-one-six, a resolution for a partial vacation of a sanitary sewer easement at Southfield Apartments, sixty-eight seventy-one, South Thirteenth Street, tax key as listed.
Guzakowski, a second.
Roll call.
Alderman Verhalen.
Aye.
Tolman.
Aye.
Gale.
Aye.
Guzakowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
All right, twenty-three, any questions on twenty-three for city engineer? Motion.
Kirkowski will make a motion to approve resolution number one-one-seven-zero-two dash zero-four-one-nine-one-six, a resolution granting a public water main easement at Southfield Apartments, sixty-eight seventy-one, six-nine-three-nine and six-nine-five-five, South Thirteenth Street, tax key as listed.
Guzakowski, a second.
Roll call.
Alderman Tolman.
Aye.
Gale.
Aye.
Guzakowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Verhalen.
Aye.
And twenty-four is a consideration of resolution number one-one-seven-zero-four dash zero-four-one-nine-one-six. It's a resolution granting a public sanitary sewer easement at Southfield Apartments, sixty-eight seventy-one and sixty-nine fifty-five, South Thirteenth Street, tax key numbers as listed in the first district, any questions? Motion.
Gelski will make a motion to approve resolution number one-one-seven-zero-four dash zero-four-one-nine-one-six, a resolution granting a public sanitary sewer easement at Southfield Apartments, sixty-eight seventy-one and sixty-nine five-five, South Thirteenth Street, tax keys as listed.
Guzakowski, a second.
Roll call.
Alderman Gale.
Aye.
Guzakowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Verhalen.
Aye.
Tolman.
Aye.
And item twenty-five is a consideration of resolution number one-one-seven-zero-three dash zero-four-one-nine-one-six. It dedicates the public improvements and releases eighty-eight seventy Mayhew Drive LLC from the development agreement for the Azura project at eighty-eight seventy South Mayhew Road. Is it Mayhew Drive or Mayhew Road? Are those two different things?
Mayhew Drive.
We're gonna go with Drive. Project number one-five-zero-five-two, tax key number as listed, third district, city engineer.
This is for the public sanitary sewer work that was required for the development. They basically converted a previously private sanitary sewer, did the improvements to get it up to par for public sanitary sewer. Work has been completed to satisfaction of engineering and to the water sewer utility.
Excellent. Questions? Motion.
Second half of that motion. Said. Is there a project, the implication there is what?
If you remember, they had an extension of a building permit there. They had expired and it indicated that they would be moving forward this year.
They still intend to?
I would think so, putting in the improvements in the water and sewer and that's the plan. I don't think we have seen specific building plans yet.
The public that's roughly between the post, Centennial and Hoots.
Right, it's on the east side of Mayhew, kind of just south of where the.
Clinic.
Yeah, the daycare center is and it was going to be a memory care facility and. Can't remember thirty-four units or something like that.
All right, any questions on that one? Motion.
Verhalen makes a motion to adopt resolution number one-one-seven-zero-three dash oh-four-one-nine-one-six, dedicating the public improvements and releasing eighty-eight seventy Mayhew Drive LLC from the development agreement for the Azura project at eighty-eight seventy South Mayhew Drive, project number one-five-zero-five-two, tax key as listed.
Guzakowski, a second.
I think it was Guzakowski. Second, roll call.
Alderman Guzakowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Verhalen.
Aye.
Tolman.
Aye.
Gale.
Aye.
And item twenty-six is a consideration of ordinance number two-seven-nine-nine to repeal and recreate section thirteen point zero-five-I relating to maximum extent practicable definition to repeal and recreate section thirteen point zero-six-A-three relating to erosion control technical standards to repeal and recreate section thirteen point zero-seven relating to erosion control. Performance standards in the repeal and recreate section thirteen point zero-nine-A-three-A-point and section thirteen point oh-nine-A-three-A-point-nine relating to erosion and sediment control plan requirements. Mike, please explain what that's all about.
Okay. Item twenty-six and twenty-seven are similar. One relates to erosion control. Item twenty-seven then relates to stormwater runoff. So I'll attempt to explain this with one time. That might be, make some people happy. But basically, there have been revisions by the state for chapter NR one-fifty-one of Wisconsin Administrative Code related to construction site and post-construction performance standards. The city was reminded last year that in accordance with the requirements of our stormwater discharge permit, that we need to adopt, amend our ordinances to adopt these changes in NR one-fifty-one. So basically, that's what this does. The permit and the ordinances regulate design and performance standards for erosion control, stormwater management, for responsible development and protection of the waters of the state regarding, you know, sediment runoff. So I can answer any specific questions regarding the changes. They are not substantial.
Is there one significant change that we would be interested in?
Some of its definitions, for instance, on the erosion control, it sets performance standards for sites less than, less than one acre and greater than one acre. And as our stormwater engineer explained to me, that that is a new requirement. The one acre was the cutoff before. Erosion control plan requirements. This maximum extent practical definition, it allows for, if the performance standards cannot be met, physically unable to be met, that the engineer can appeal to the city engineer and make the case for what is the maximum extent practical.
There's a reasonableness standard, it seems like.
Yes.
Good. Questions? Absolutely, I'll make that my main priority. All right, no questions, motion on twenty-six.
Gale will move to approve ordinance number twenty-seven ninety-nine as listed.
Guzakowski, a second.
Roll call.
Alderman Kirkowski.
Aye.
Verhalen.
Aye.
Tolman.
Aye.
Gale.
Aye.
Guzakowski.
Aye.
And item twenty-seven is a consideration of ordinance number twenty-eight hundred to repeal and recreate section thirteen point one-zero-three FF relating to maximum extent practicable definition, repeal and recreate section thirteen point one-zero-five-D relating to rainfall depth and distribution, create section thirteen point one-o-five-E relating to applicability of maximum extent practicable. Man, repeal and recreate section thirteen point one-zero-six-D relating to stormwater quality performance standards, repeal and recreate section thirteen point one-o-six-I relating to infiltration performance standards, create section thirteen point one-o-six-M relating to swale treatment for transportation facilities and to create thirteen, section thirteen point one-zero-six-N relating to maintenance of effort for redevelopment sites.
So this is very similar to the previous item, only having to do with stormwater maintenance.
My reading was much more.
Yes. You covered it.
Damn. I'm guessing written by attorneys too, the same. Okay. Really? Phil wrote that, all right. Gotta take Phil a lunch. All right, any questions or comments on twenty-seven? All right, motion.
Gale will move to approve ordinance twenty-eight hundred as listed.
Guzakowski, a second.
That's cheap.
How come I didn't do that?
I don't know.
You're common council president, that's why. All right, do we get a second? Who was the second?
Guzakowski.
I think Guzakowski has a quicker second trigger than Kirkowski. I'm sensing.
Syllables.
All right. Roll call.
Alderman Verhalen.
Aye.
Tolman. Gale.
Aye.
Guzakowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Been a long day. License committee. We're gonna hand it off to our esteemed council member in the first district, Alderman Kirkowski.
License committee met on April thirteenth, two thousand sixteen, minutes are attached, recommendations are as follows. Item twenty-eight?
Yes.
Kirkowski will make a motion to grant an operator's license to Brittany Schmidt, two-twenty-five West Sunnyview Drive, Oak Creek.
A little second.
Roll call.
Alderman Tolman.
Aye.
Gale.
Aye.
Guzakowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Verhalen.
Aye.
Item twenty-nine.
Kirkowski will make a motion to grant a special event permit to Chris Clausen, event coordinator for Boots, Saluna and Grill, eighty-nine fifty South Twenty-seventh Street, for a parking lot party on May twenty-eighth, two thousand sixteen.
I've got a, just before you get a second, I've got a comment from, form from Christopher J. Kempkin. Oh, you wanna, okay, I got it on hold if you want to come up. All right, I need a second. Oh, hold on one second, come on up. Which one's you? All right, Jim Batch Helder, you have a comment? All right, come on up.
My name's Jim Batch Helder, I live at eighty-nine thirty-one South Twenty-sixth Street in Oak Creek, Wisconsin. I just want to remind the common council that Boots has been issued numerous noise violations, to the point where they've been deemed a nuisance property. They continue to have negligence toys and towards the noise ordinance. Since the creation of this professionally installed interior noise barrier, the establishment has continued to have multiple tickets. Many of you members of this common council sat here one year ago when they had their license renewed and you said, if you get another ticket, I'll start the revocation process myself. So I'm asking one of you to do that now. Secondly, I encourage you to not allow this organization to have a special permit because simply they are a nuisance, they do not follow the law, and they are the only nuisance property in the City of Oak Creek, according to the chief of police. So that's all I have to say.
Thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
Next up is Stephen Viera, eighty-nine eighty-one South Twenty-sixth Street.
My name is Steve Viera, eighty-nine eighty-one South Twenty-sixth Street. Pretty much to reiterate, pretty much the same thing Jim said. Boots is a nuisance property, my understanding, the only one in the City of Oak Creek, and I'm not really sure it's appropriate or fair to issue them a special events permit while they are still a nuisance property. I would think more of a fair thing to do would be when they've cleared the nuisance property process and they've gone a set amount of time, as determined, let's say what the council decides, that, you know, then, then we could consider a special. decides, that, you know, then, then we could consider a special event. But prior to that, I'm not really sure that's the appropriate thing to do. Number two, I'm not really sure all of the details have been a hundred percent hammered out on this event. I know one of the things is parking restrictions have yet to be brought before the proper committee, and I apologize, I don't know the name of that committee.
Plus traffic and safety.
Traffic and safety. Yeah, I understand. So, you know, if, you know, should we consider holding the event or holding the vote until that it's been cleared? And third, I ask Alderman Kurkowski to recuse himself on this vote, as it's my understanding that he has a family member that works for Boots, and I think that shows a conflict of interest that if one way or the other, it shows the potential for bias if there is any bias at all. So, thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments. Did you have something to say, Chief? Yeah, just to be very brief, just to reiterate what I spoke at the committee level that the police department's opposed to this permit, they are nuisance property. They've received citations since last July. When they received their license, there was four more citations that have been issued. Last one, March nineteenth, they are the only nuisance property in the city. And right now, there is really no penalty for what they're doing. We charge them for the officer's time. Generally, a call like this takes twenty, thirty minutes, something like that. So really, they're being charged thirty, forty bucks. This would be a way to show that there is some consequences for being a nuisance property by denying this permit. It's specific to this permit, it's not their license, that's what I'm talking about. So that's our position at the police department. I can speak to some of the parking issues. CJ and I have talked, CJ, we talked on the phone, and depending on where this goes, should it be passed? The parking restrictions fall on my lap, not traffic and safety, and I would be the one to do the temporary no parking, and we've discussed where that would be and things like that, so. Okay, thanks for the input. Open it up to the council.
I have comments.
Alderman Kurkowski?
First off, I am not going to, not, I am, I am going to vote on this for the various reasons. I discussed this with the city attorney. I do not personally, in any way, shape, or form, benefit financially from both of my sons that now work at Boots. Whether or not they work a special event, or if this event is granted, or anything to the like, I benefit no way. So there's no conflict of interest. I don't charge them rent. The money they earn is all theirs. We pay for everything with regards to education and gas for the son that lives at the house. So if they were to lose their jobs, there's no, there's no financial harm to me. So I've talked to the city attorney, and I have no problems there. So I am going to vote. Secondly, for the benefit of the council members who do not come to license committee, we probably talked about this matter by close to two hours in two separate meetings, and my personal opinion is that, and I've shared this before, this is a daytime event from noon to ten, and the folks that have issues with Boots are talking about a nighttime matter. And even in a court of law, had they gotten four tickets as they have gotten right now, they're still not been adjudicated. So in a court of law, they don't even count, okay? They may have gotten them, but they don't count for purposes of even coming to us with the license committee because they haven't been adjudicated yet. Chief, you're saying they have been?
Chief.
I'll be on a mic.
That they've been issued can be taken into consideration. They have in the past for different licenses. Whether they're adjudicated or not, that hasn't happened. But the fact that they've been issued can be considered by the council.
I have some water. Okay, I, we, our opinions differ, and I think, I think that's the way I'm going to leave it. But Boots came to the first meeting with a very basic, bland, shall we say, plan as to how they were going to have their, their party. And at the suggestions, recommendations, whatever, they came back with a, a much more detailed plan as to how they want to have this party. And as I said before, and I wish I had some water, but this is from noon to ten, and they understand, they understand that they're going to cut their, their music at about nine fifteen, and the beer sales are going to end about the same time, and they have roughly sixty minutes to clear their parking lot before the ten PM noise ordinances take effect. So I, as I mentioned at the meeting, it's sink or swim for them. They have an opportunity to, to do something, and as Alderman Rahalan said at the meeting, he thought that it would be a good idea for them to wait a year. I thought it was a good idea to give them a chance to do it. And again, their issues are nighttime offenses, and this is a daytime event, and that's my opinion. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Toman.
John, what's the timeline on a nuisance property? Do they have a, does this expire in a year, and they have a clean slate, or what happens?
The ordinance doesn't really address a timeline. That's specific to whatever we decide how they're doing. And it was a four months, I think the one, after they came to license, or the council as a whole, I think the last citations they received last year after the licensing was July, early July, I want to say third or something like that. Then they received another citation after that in November. So we had about four months, three and a half months go by before they received another citation. In my mind, I have no problem setting a timeline. It's basically on me to set that limit by the ordinance, and I was going to be looking at, okay, if we get something for six months, we'll take a look at this. They went three and a half, just right around four months, and they got another ticket. So they're still a nuisance. And then we received one in February and two in March.
I think it is a good idea to have a timeline. I mean, as a, as a business owner myself, if that ever happened to me, I mean, if I clean up my act, every time I want to do an outdoor event, would I want this label hung over me for the rest of, I mean, that's, I think that's something that should be looked at. But now, in regard to a daytime event, I'm assuming the bar is going to be open after ten, right?
Yes.
And the previous nuisance complaints have come from inside the bar, right? These weren't outdoor events. Okay.
Well, they did, the last outdoor event they had was two years ago, and we were called three times to that.
Okay, but a lot of the nuisance calls have been indoor noise.
Yeah, the majority of those, the noise complaints were from the inside.
So the assumption that you're going to have all these people on, on location, there's going to be a carryover into the inside of that bar that night. That's, I think that's a practical conclusion.
So going back, if you remember, two years ago, they got three citations? No, they didn't get three citations. We were called to the event three times. One was for parking, for the parking on Twenty-seventh Street that they were blocking, I think it was people exiting the business. We got a call from Franklin residents about the noise from across the street, and then another, I think it was another noise complaint. So those were the three things we were called for. They were not cited. We worked with them, we got things straightened out. They can be cited during the day. The ordinance allows for that.
I disagree with, I disagree with something during the day. That's a zoning matter, and my position on that ordinance is that it talks about during normal operations.
No, I'm not talking about that one. I'm not talking about the decibel one. The noise ordinance itself does allow for daytime citations, and I think we discussed it at the licensing. It had to do with, like, sometimes we have people playing their, they'll be practicing a band in a garage or something during the day, and we'll get a call, it's a constant problem, and they'll call, we get calls about it, and it was, I think Alderman Gale asked, is that pretty much driven by complaints? And that's what it is. Those, those are the daytime types that we get, and they can't.
That's not the one that talks about in the business district or residential one?
No, that's a separate zoning ordinance with decibel level, and we, we haven't enforced that. I'm not looking to. All right, let's, let's get back to where we're, we're talking about a special event permit for this event. Do we have a date on this? When is this, May twenty-eighth? All right, so roughly a month away. Any other?
Does CJ want to talk?
Are you asking him to speak, or you want the audience member to speak?
Does CJ want to talk?
He can come up, he's got a forum here, so come on up.
Check one, two, check. Just want to address a couple of things that were said. There are times when the chief or the police department is called out, and the officers come to the location and say, I don't know what they're calling for, you guys are obviously not too loud. There are lots of calls that we get, and as Jim did say, he would like to have you guys start the process of revocating our license. So I don't know if that leads to the amount of calls that we get, but there are plenty of times, as many that we do get tickets, that we do not. All that aside, that's not the issue here. The issue is what's going on that day. I heard someone mention a carryover of patrons after ten. We have a capacity, so the crowd needs to be dispersed, whether it's inside or outside. They cannot hang around, linger in the parking lot. It'd be no different than any other busy Saturday once ten o'clock hit. And then also, just any problems to two years ago, as the chief did say, we weren't cited for them. I mean, there were calls, but there were issues that could be easily addressed. And the parking on Twenty-seventh Street also happens twice a year during Mulligan's St. Patty's Day events.
Just for my, my question is, so for this event, what kind of security do you bring in? What kind of staff do you have outside that's handling parking? Talk about that.
Yep. It was actually brought up as a part of the license committee, and then also, again, with the neighbors. We did have a sit down with the neighbors and see what they would like to see if it was passed. We're also made aware by the assistant fire chief that we, for a crowd of like five to six hundred, which we anticipate, would need a crowd manager, someone who's licensed in that. And events passed, we have hired Twin City Security to be on, on the premise, only about three of them though, just to handle parking. We reached out to them and asked them about the crowd management, what they would recommend for amount of security. They said it would be, I believe, five, I have in my notes, five of their people on staff who are trained in several different categories that would address to this event. In addition to that, we would have five of our own that would be actually outdoors, like in a position, like a scheduled position, like this area needs to be watched. And in addition to that, we'd have two, three, or more that would be just canvassing the lot in the nearby areas of the neighborhood, making sure nothing that we didn't want going on was happening.
Is this a weekend, weekend night?
Yeah, Saturday, May twenty-eighth, yep.
The music part of this, is this all day from noon to ten, or is part of it music and part of it just people outside?
It will be kind of spread out in between. There's like half hour breaks where it might be like a contestant from our idol singing, not really like a full band. I want to say the first band would start at two o'clock. It should be ended at nine. We said nine fifteen just to give us a little leeway on when they actually ended.
For the chief, any outside event with music or a band, couldn't conceivably any of those situations create a call from a neighbor? For example, Community Center has concerts in the summer that I get calls about, because some people don't want to hear anything past eight o'clock at night. They go to bed or whatever. Couldn't any outside event with a band with music conceivably cause the same problems regardless if it's Boots or anybody else? Yeah, the issue we have with Boots are very unique as far as what type of business they are. They're zone business. The other, like the Community Center, I believe, is institutional, just as a school, so they don't fall under the same restrictions that we talked about, some of the zoning ordinances. The one ordinance that applies anytime is if you have a business, a Boots residential, you can't be over a certain decibel level. They're one of the only that do this. They're the only one I can think of that does this. Churches, things like that, Lions Fest don't fit into that category. So, yeah, we could get calls on it, but they're allowed to have those based on the zoning that they have. You've been around for a while. Have we ever had another bar, restaurant that's done anything like this that you can remember? Not in that area. It's just, you know, and it's nothing against the business. They're, you know, I have, CJ is very cooperative with me when I deal with them. We have conversations. It's where they're located. It's, it's a, it's, if it wasn't for the bands, some of the work they did last year, they put in a wall, but they were also said that they would put in a door on that one corner. Apparently, it didn't work out for them. They didn't put in that wall and complete that work and said it's, and from what I understand, it's not planned on being completed because it, they didn't think that was the way to go. So I think that's one of the issues, and it's just where it's located. I can't think of another business we've ever dealt with like that. It has, it's nothing personal against the business. Where it's located and the calls we get that we verify. And the calls we do get where we go there, and we don't cite, the officers have discretion. I tell them, you're not just going to cite, you're going to make sure that there's an issue. It doesn't mean there wasn't noise. It means that the officers have said that noise level doesn't reach to where I think it's a problem. So there is noise, but they use their discretion, and I tell them, use your discretion, that's the biggest tool you have. So they're very good about this. So yes, there's a lot of times we don't cite.
Mayor, if I could just add, the, the, make sure I have all this. The, one of the questions was porta johns. They were originally, they were just going to put them in one section. They're going to space them out, which should help with, hopefully, public urination, because if you remember years past, the, the property owner had a problem with that fencing, and people were, at least that's the belief, is that people were going into, through the openings in the fence, and going into people's backyards and, and urinating there. So the fence continues to be a problem. I guess if pieces come down, they put them back up. So they're, they're cognizant, he's cognizant of that. So the porta johns are there. The parking on Twenty-seventh, we brought, we broached that at the committee meeting, and it's a state highway, so the chief can't post no parking on Twenty-seventh because it's not under his jurisdiction to do so. They are going to have overflow parking at Mulligan's, and the concern was people crossing the street. They're going to have signs to warn people, and warn the drivers of, you know, people crossing over. So I mean, there's, again, they've, they've put forth an effort. All, all that was said and done about, everything good and bad here, I mean, they, they're trying to put forth an effort, again.
All right, what does council want to do on this?
We have a, I have a motion.
Alderman Rahalan.
Second.
Guys, I need a second, so go ahead.
Just a little bit to add to how the discussion went at license committee, and it has nothing to do with, with the establishment, has nothing to do with the feelings of, of any of the individuals that were on the license committee and discuss this, but some of the facts, I think that, that, I mean, play into this is, is, you know, albeit, they have been working diligently to remedy some of the problems that the chief has had, and some of the residents have had with them. I think they're on the right track in getting some of this stuff taken care of. But, I mean, you have to look at the actual history of, of, of the complaints and the nature of the complaints, and that goes back a number of years. Even Alderman Mahowski had complaints regarding this establishment. That, so that goes back a number of years already. I know, I know Alderman Guzekowski's had numerous complaints and, and contacts with the neighbors in regards to the establishment. Two years ago, they had a event very similar to this. Probably not a lot of planning went into it. It didn't, it didn't go probably as a hundred percent as planned. They did get complaints. When they came to license committee the first time, they didn't have a real plan for the license committee to look at as far as how they were going to lay things out, how things were going to be done. They didn't have a meeting with the aldermen, didn't have a meeting with the neighbors. I kind of suggested that they do so. They, they took it under advice, and, and they did have a neighborhood meeting. I think Alderman Guzekowski was also present at that. The only thing that I have, have reservations about is, they do have a history of complaints, and I mentioned the fact that at licensing that, you know, if, if something does go awry with this event, and it comes back to their license renewal, I don't want to see this business potentially lose their license because of something that happens with this event. And I suggest that they just hold off for another year, because they're on the road to making amends with the neighbors. I mean, they're really showing a consolidated effort to make good on, on what they promised to do here. And I'd hate to see everything that they've put in it, everything that the chief has put in, trying to work with them. You know, Alderman Guzekowski, what he's put in with all the meetings and stuff at the neighbors and the neighborhood, and I'd hate to see it all just go down the wrong road if something goes awry with this party. And I, I just kind of wish that they'd hold off for another year, and that was my sentiment at license as well.
Okay, so I have, go ahead, Alderman Guzekowski.
Okay, so I have, go ahead, Alderman Guzekowski?
So here's my perspective. We met, the neighbors, a group of neighbors met, and I met with the reps from Boots, CJ and, and Chris. They brought a, a great plan to the table. I think the neighbors looked at the plan and Boots was very receptive to the neighbors' concerns and worries, open to potentially making changes. We're making progress, and I, I know for some people it may seem like it's, it's baby steps. We are making progress, but we're just not there yet. Now, Chris Clausen is not here, she's out of the country. So I did talk to her prior to tonight as well, before she left. So we're, we're making progress, but while we're making progress right now, I did tell her that I wouldn't be able to support this at this time. But we are so very close. One thing she asked is if we'd be open to continued discussions with the neighbors and Boots going forward, and I told her we'd work on that.
Okay, so Alderman Kerkowski has made a motion on number 29. Need a second. Do we have a second? All right, need a second to move forward, so there's no action on 29. I would just say this, I would encourage the folks at Boots, the neighbors, to continue the dialogue. I, I take it on faith from Alderman Guzekowski and Alderman Kerkowski that there's efforts being made to solve some of these problems. Never going to be perfect, I can tell you. Having a bar or restaurant next to you with live music is never going to be the quiet life you may be looking for, so that's always going to be an issue, but I certainly think both parties can get together and have a conversation where we can maybe get this so that both parties seem comfortable with the situation. So we'll continue to have a conversation, and hopefully we can figure it out.
And Mayor, if I could just add, I'm more than willing to work with everybody involved. We've been trying to do that, and if we can get it to it, it's the last thing I want to do, is to have to monitor a business for something like this. We've got other things to do, and if we can resolve this, that's best for everybody.
Law, law enforcement has a very busy job. Last thing, as the chief said, we don't want to be wasting our time chasing noise complaints. All right, moving forward, I'll head back off to Alderman Kerkowski for item 30.
Item 30, Kerkowski will make a motion to grant a special event permit to Troy Wheeler, event coordinator for Ragnar Events LLC, 12 South 400 West Salt Lake City, Utah, for the Ragnar Relay Chicago 2060 Run/Walk Event to be held on June 10th and 11th, 2016.
Any questions on that? Annual event, I don't know how many years they've had it?
Five, at least.
Yeah, quite a few. I've never heard a complaint about it. If there's no other comments, let's get a motion on 30.
I made the motion.
Second.
Boy, getting late, sorry. Roll call.
Alderman Guzekowski?
Aye.
Kerkowski?
Aye.
Verhaelen?
Aye.
Toman?
Aye.
Gale?
Aye.
31?
All right, the following items were received after the license committee met. Tentative recommendations are as follows. Kerkowski will make a motion to grant an operator's license to the 13 individuals listed on the agenda. Favorable background reports were received.
Gale, a second.
Roll call.
Alderman Kerkowski?
Aye.
Verhaelen?
Aye.
Toman?
Aye.
Gale?
Aye.
Guzekowski?
Aye.
All right, so we are going to jump ahead before we go to closed session to the Streets, Parks and Forestry items, which is 37 and 38. Those were addendums to the original agenda for this meeting. Item 37 is a motion to authorize the Street, Parks and Forestry Department to utilize proceeds from the auction of capital equipment to purchase a new Skag Turf Tiger Zero Turn mower, STT 61V-26CHEFI mower from Milwaukee Power Equipment, in the amount of $9,618 to cut areas at Drexel Town Square. Ted?
Yeah, it's pretty self-explanatory. We had auctioned off four pieces of equipment, received favorable bids on them, we're, we're really excited about that. And we would like to be able to utilize that money, getting rid of some old aged equipment and, and be able to use it to purchase some new equipment for our guys to use.
Excellent. Questions? I think given the facility that we have here, I think it's important that we maintain the area around it. I've seen it already with the work of the staff, your, your people and some of the other folks. Definitely want to keep that going as we roll out the rest of the development here, so I think it's, it's a good, good idea to get the equipment needed to do that, so. Motion on 37.
It will move to authorize the Streets, Parks and Forestry Department to utilize proceeds from the auction of capital equipment to purchase a new Skag Turf Tiger Zero Turn mower, Milwaukee Power Equipment, in the amount of $9,618 to cut areas at Drexel Town Square.
Guzekowski, a second.
Roll call.
Alderman Verhaelen?
Aye.
Toman?
Aye.
Gale?
Aye.
Guzekowski?
Aye.
Item 38 is a motion to authorize Streets, Parks and Forestry Department to utilize proceeds from the auction of capital equipment to purchase a new John Deere HPX vehicle from Proven Power Inc. in the amount of $8,186 to maintain boulevards, trails and common areas also at Drexel Town Square.
So this actually would spill outside of Drexel Town Square, and we would use this on some of the, the parkways adjacent to the areas, and Howell and Drexel, Ryan River as well.
You mean the grassy medians?
Correct, right. To maintain the bed planted areas.
Yep. Any thoughts about adding some more beds on Drexel or Howell this year, or next year's our goal?
Actually, I believe we were going to add, I think, two additional beds on Drexel this year, but they're also looking at possibly doing an RFP to, to do some additional improvements. So I know that's something in the future.
Yeah, it was unrelated by this one. Go ahead. Expound on my unrelated agenda item.
No, no, I've tasked the Community Development Department with putting some RFPs together for Howell Avenue from College all the way to Rossin to put beds in the median there. That's an area that's underserved right now. We've got, I think, something like $300,000 in TIFF 10, and we've got that as one of the items in that district. We would be looking for a contractor, I think, to work on that, be a little bit different beds than what Ted and his folks have done, because we're, we're pushing them quite a bit in terms of what that workload is, so trying to do a combination of our staff and contractors.
Excellent. Any questions? Motion on 30? Go ahead, Alderman Toman.
Are we replacing equipment with these additions? Are you getting rid of anything?
Actually, the, the items that were below are the ones that we auctioned off.
I know, but I'm talking about these are for grass.
No, these are, these are additions to our equipment.
Okay.
Adding on for some other areas that actually we weren't maintaining in the past.
Okay, gotcha.
Anything else? Motion on 38.
It will move to authorize the Streets, Parks and Forestry Department to utilize proceeds from the auction of capital equipment to purchase a new John Deere HPX vehicle from Proven Power Inc. in the amount of $8,186 to maintain boulevards, trails and common areas at Drexel Town Square.
And parkways, and other areas in the city. Thanks for the call.
Guzekowski, a second.
Guzekowski, seconds, roll call.
Alderman Toman?
Aye.
Gale?
Aye.
Guzekowski?
Aye.
Kerkowski?
Aye.
Verhaelen?
Aye.
Item 32 is a, is a consideration of a motion, thank you Ted, a motion to convene in the closed session pursuant to Wisconsin State statutes to discuss the following. A, Section 19.851G, to consider the claim for excessive assessment of H&amp;K Partners LLC. B, Section 19.851G, to consider the claim for excessive assessment of Trappers 1 LLC. And C, Section 19.851E, to consider a proposed second amendment to tax incremental District Number 11 Finance Development Agreement by and between the City of Oak Creek and Oak Creek Medical Developer Inc., HSA project in the 2nd District. Council President Gale.
Gale, move to convene in the closed session pursuant to Wisconsin State statutes to discuss the following. A, Section 19.851G to consider the claim for excessive assessment of H&amp;K Partners LLC. B, Section 19.851G to consider the claim for excessive assessment of Trappers 1 LLC. C, Section 19.851E to consider a proposed second amendment to tax incremental District Number 11 Finance Development Agreement by and between the City of Oak Creek and Oak Creek Medical Developer Inc.
Guzekowski, a second.
Roll call.
Alderman Gale?
Aye.
Guzekowski?
Aye.
Kerkowski?
Aye.
Verhaelen?
Aye.
Toman?
Aye.
Gale?
Aye.
All right, so there's two items that we're going to take action on. Well, the first one is 32A.
As to 32A, excuse me, it would be a motion to authorize the issuance of a notice of disallowance of the claim for excessive assessment of H&amp;K Partners LLC for the property at 2040 West Ryan Road, Oak Creek, Wisconsin, related to the 2015 assessment.
It also moves, Guzekowski, a second.
Roll call.
Alderman Kerkowski?
Aye.
Verhaelen?
Aye.
Toman?
Aye.
Gale?
Aye.
And then 32B.